This is Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. This is a Prescott City Council voting session. Thank you all for coming out today. Mayor Pro Tem, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I'd like to invite everyone to our Veterans Parade tomorrow. The service will be at 10:30. However, the parade starts at 11:00, 11:00 on the 11th. And so I hope you will all join us. We will socially distance and celebrate our veterans. So I hope that everyone will come. Also, we'd like to share, I think, really good news about our taxable activity report that was provided by Mark Whitfield yesterday. We are up for the city for our taxable income by 12.38 percent. Pretty huge, so that's awesome. Our construction activity is up 17.24 percent. And even our retail sales, up 13, 13 and a half percent. Pretty amazing. So thank you to our community and for everybody supporting, supporting us locally so that we can continue such good revenue coming in for our city. So, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, good news. Thank you.
Good news.
On the Veterans Day Parade, I want to thank Michelle Stacy Schroeder, who's done a great job, and her team putting that together. It's been a difficult thing to do this year because of the virus. Yet I'm certain that they've done all that they can to keep people very safe. We realize that numbers are starting to climb, yet as Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, we feel like it is a safe event outside where you can distance along the parade route. So, you know, if, if folks are sick, we'd ask you not to come, of course, or if you're vulnerable, those kinds of things that you've already heard. We want to be careful with the virus, but it is important because our veterans are important here in the city of Prescott. All right, before we move on, I have another announcement. How you doing, Chief Black? Let's, if you don't mind, let's convene up at the podium, if you don't mind meeting me up there. This is like getting called to the principal's office, right? Are you okay? Good. Are you surprised that you're up here with me today? Yeah, when you saw your husband sitting there in a suit, that was pretty impressive. Well, it's a real honor to celebrate Chief Black today. She has 40 years of public service that we're celebrating. She started when she was 10. I have a list here. I want to just go through her accomplishments and appreciate you playing along. I, I actually demanded of the deputy chief that she get me this information as well as some photos. You kind of do look like you're 10 there with a long rifle. Let's see. Chief Black was appointed to chief here at Prescott Police Department in July of 2016 and is the first woman to serve in that position. Prior to joining the Prescott PD, Chief Black served as chief of police for the city of Glendale for four years, preceded by five and a half years as the assistant chief. Chief Black began her career with the Phoenix PD in 1980 as a patrol officer, working her way through the ranks until she was promoted to Assistant Police Chief in 2000. Pretty impressive. During her career, Chief Black was awarded the Medal of Valor, three medals of life-saving, and two Police Chiefs Unit Awards. Chief Black is an Executive Fellow for the Police Foundation, dedicated to advancing policing through innovation and science. She serves as the third Vice President for the Arizona Association of Chiefs of Police, is a member of the Yavapai County Justice and Mental Health Coalition, Advisory Board Member for the Coalition of Compassion and Justice, and serves on the NIDA Practitioner Board for the Justice Community Opioid Innovation Network. She was appointed as an inaugural member of the Council on Criminal Justice, a national nonpartisan think tank formed to advance criminal justice policies and practices, and is a charter member of Prescott Area Women Who Care. Chief Black is a very proud, or very proud to be a big in blue to little sister Kyra? Kira. Little sister Kira through Yavapai Big Brothers, Big Sisters. The YWCA honored her as the Public Service Leader of the Year in 2008. Chief Black earned her Master of Public Administration and Bachelor of Science from Arizona State University. She attended the Harvard University Kennedy School of Government, Senior Executives in State and Local Government, and has earned a certificate in Legal Studies at Phoenix College. She is currently pursuing her Masters in Clinical Mental Health Counseling through Grand Canyon University. And this is just a condensed list of all her accomplishments. We could continue if we wanted to, but Chief, I just want to say we're really honored that you're standing here in our Prescott Council chambers today and that we get to celebrate you and all these accomplishments and your 40 years of service. It's, it's truly extraordinary that someone would be of your stature and leadership in law enforcement, 40 years, absolutely amazing, and a great example for all of us. And I know on behalf of our council, we are very grateful to have you as our leader of our PD. I know our community members would say the same thing, and I know by the number of cookies and pizzas I see in the break room that our community appreciates our PD, and that's largely due to your leadership. Through a very difficult time that we're living through right now, our community has a high level of respect and trust for our police department, and it's because of your leadership. And I know I can speak on behalf of lieutenants and deputy chiefs sitting here that they have a ton of respect for you and appreciate your leadership. And, and so we're deeply grateful and honored to have you here today and to celebrate 40 years. So in recognition of gratitude for 40 years of dedicated public safety service to the people of Arizona and the law enforcement profession, I give you this certificate of recognition. Would you like to say a few words? I know we're catching you very much off guard.
Yeah, for a trained observer, I did not, I, I did not see any of this coming, and I'm just so completely overwhelmed. It's kind of cliche just to say that serving is an honor, and it's just been my, the privilege of my life to be here in Prescott in particular. Phoenix is great. Glendale is great, wonderful men and women serving there. But to be here now through this season with all of you, the mayor said it, we enjoy such tremendous community support, even when they're asking hard questions, that we can answer those questions, and we want to rise to the, the occasion and continue to learn and grow and get better. You are the most wonderful community and the wonderful police department I've ever had the privilege to serve with. So, Mayor, council, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
I just wonder if that mental health degrees for putting up with her husband for the next few years.
Okay, we are going to have an invocation by Father Raj with Sacred Heart Catholic Church, Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Good.
Let us pray. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders your people need. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, God our Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy to build a peaceful and just community according to your holy will. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
On this Veterans Day Eve, I think it's very appropriate that we're going to be recognizing all of our veterans who've sacrificed and fought for our freedoms. So please join me in pledging allegiance to our great republic and the flag that represents it.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Raj. Let's call a roll, please.
Mayor Mangerelli.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
And Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, let's go to presentations.
Presentation to airport staff in recognition of Prescott Regional Airport being named Arizona's 2020 Airport of the Year.
Wow, you brought the whole gang. They're watching the score.
Squirrels.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to sing the praises of the Prescott Regional Airport today and of this really awesome staff. PRC, Arizona's 2020 Airport of the Year. Ernest A. Love Field, Prescott Regional Airport, has been named Arizona's 2020 Airport of the Year by the Arizona Department of Transportation Aeronautics Group. The selection was based on several criteria, including aviation advocacy, special events, and community outreach. New processes and programs implemented, commitment to the advancement of aviation, and calendar year 2019 awards and acknowledgements. In 2019, PRC received the following recognitions. The 2019 Outstanding Airport Award from the FAA Western Pacific Region. The 2019 International Council of Airshows, Best Civilian Airshow. The 2019 Airport Executive of the Year, Airport Director, Robin Sabat. In the past year, the PRCA, or the PRCA, no, I'm in the feed business now. In the past year, the PRC has sought political advocacy for additional state funding, support for Arizona airports, which secured an additional $10 million in development funding. In the past year, PRC has generated $160.3 million in economic impact to the area. Their support of, of conducting innovative onsite ARF, firefighting out there at the airport, annual live burn training activities, has earned recognition from ADOT Aeronautics Group Director, Don Kreis. The beautiful new $15 million passenger terminal will come to completion in the spring of 2021, assisting with PRC's fast-growing commercial service and deployments, which have risen over 170 percent. And correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, you reached 10,000 deployments last month. Awesome. PRC follows in the steps of Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, who was named the 2019 Arizona Airport of the Year. This is the second time in the past decade that PRC has been the recipient of the ADOT Aeronautic Recognition, as it was also named Airport of the Year in 2014. So let's give these guys a big hand, everybody. Since the mayor had Chief Black say a few words, I'm going to have our Airport Director, Robin Sabat, say a few words. So, Robin?
Thank you, Steve. You know, since I arrived, I look back at what we've done as a team, and it's been amazing. We've, we've served over 100,000 total passengers in just about two and a half years. We've actually had more than a half million aircraft takeoff and land over the last two years at the airport. We've secured more than $20 million in funding with the goal to secure another 70 million in the next five years. And we couldn't stand here and, and really let you know about all these achievements without telling everybody that this is the backbone of the airport behind us that have helped us make all these achievements. Alex, Kate, Ron, Christie, Kathy, Jeff, Doug, and of course, our newest one, Rick Page. And we've got a few back at the airport that are watching things. And, you know, without people like this, literally, they get up at 4:00 in the morning, don't you, Ron? 3:00 in the morning. So, I mean, you know, to get the airport ready and stay until, my gosh, we're talking Alex, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning. So for two hours a day, we are closed. But it's not just this team. I also want to do a shout out to police and fire and the support for Parks and Joe, your team, and everything that's been done. This has really been a city effort. Chief Light, Chief Black, thank you so much for everybody helping us get this award. It really has been a true team effort. Thank you.
Going to do some photos?
Did you want to sign here?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I'll go grab that.
Pulling the sign out.
I'll get it, I'll get it.
May I present this to you? Without the city council's support and the mayor's support.
And we're going to spread these guys out so we can get you all in one big picture here.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then so here, we're going to figure out where to stand here.
Let me stand to the side. It's the team's turn.
Doug, come this way. I've got to get all of our fine council members in, so come, I want the first person here. Two, three.
John, do you want us to stand?
If you, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay.
Just want to make sure I can see everybody.
We're squatting here.
Just a little bit. Anybody else on this side? Eyes on this? Just move over a little bit. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Good, you're, you're good there.
Michael.
Oh, wait, you got, it's you guys, huh?
No. Yes, we can all see you.
Yeah, I can see you. Excellent, okay. I'm going to take a few here. Smile. Keep smiling. Good.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job, guys. Appreciate all your help, council.
To the members of the council and the mayor, this is your airport. Thank you for what you've done to help support us.
Your Dr. Sabat.
All right. Lots of good news. Appreciate that. Let's go to the consent agenda. Would any member like to pull anything from consent today?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to just make a couple of corrections to our minutes from our October 27th meeting.
So poll item A?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, will entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7B through 7G.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Okay, Councilman Good?
Yeah, I just had a couple of minor corrections on the introductions and announcements page. I did make the comment about the recent dedication of the Charlotte Hall Education Building, but I recognized actually the birthday of the namesake of our museum, Charlotte Hall herself, who was 150 years old on October 27th, born in 1870. Secondly, on the item 8K, my motion was to postpone that item, not to table it. So if we could just change that to postpone, that would be corrected.
And I've already made a note of those revisions that you called to my attention last week, and they'll be finalized appropriately.
Thank you. I just wanted to make that for the record. I appreciate that.
Okay, with those changes, entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's go to consent ordinance, please.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2020-1732, An Ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of real property from Southwest Land and Cattle LLC for the MW4G Monitoring Well Project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchase. An adoption of ordinance number 2020-1733, An Ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of a public sewer easement from Robert and Jennifer Walker, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance.
All right, thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-1732.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Entertain a motion. Which one?
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 2020-1733.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you for that. Let's move on to liquor license.
Public hearing in consideration for a new Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License application from Skylar Reeves, applicant for La Planchata Tequila and Tacos, location 217 West Gurley Street. The application fee has been paid. The sign has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no comments have been received.
All right, I see the applicant here. You want to come talk about your latest greatest thing here? I know you're, you're always full of details when we ask you, but we'll try anyway.
What do you, what do you guys want to know? Tequila and tacos were the chop house in Genovese's was, right there on West Gurley. So, yeah.
And La Planchata means what?
So La Planchata is a kind of a Mexican folklore ghost story of a nurse who would come to the hospital at night and watch over the patients and heal them. So you wanted to get a visit by La Planchata. La Planchata is like, refers to her uniform being ironed, like the old, picture of the old nurse's uniform that's ironed real stiffly with the old hat, you know? So we think the spirit of tequila may do some healing.
We could use that now.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, we didn't, I honestly didn't even think about the virus when we came up with the name, and I was like, oh, right, you know? So, so, yeah, so it's kind of has a moody, darker, not darker, kind of moody vibe. All about margaritas, simple, small menu. We're going to do a lot, we want to set up to go. We want to use, there's an entrance to the alley, as I had mentioned to, to you, Councilman Sishka. The, there's, I don't know how to describe it, but there's an entrance to the Whiskey Row Alley there that we, will either be like a food pickup or maybe some kind of an entrance, or we're not exactly sure on that one yet, so.
Yeah, that's good. I saw that in your marketing and wondered how that was going to work. When, when are you guys hoping to open?
This year. Is the goal. But the other one, the county seat, is going to be open like soon, like super soon.
Well, now you're off the agenda, so.
Yeah. Well, it's a chance to market, you know, if anyone wants to talk about it. It's going to be open soon.
All right, thanks, Skylar.
Skylar, are these street tacos?
You know, we'll see.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're going to be handmade tortillas, fresh squeezed lime juice.
Sweet.
Small tacos, not big tacos, I think. But I reserve the right to change that.
He wants you to come in, councilman, and check it out.
Yeah, you got to come check it out. Bring your money.
All right, thanks, Skylar. Appreciate it. Thanks for your, yep, thanks for your investment in the city. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve Recommendation for Liquor License Number 120643 for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for La Planchata Tequila and Tacos, location 217 West Gurley Street.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll be a little unconventional. On regular agenda, let's consider item 10E first. I understand the applicant wants to postpone at this point?
Applicant has requested, Mayor, a continuance or a postponement till a date to be determined. So at this point, the council simply can make a motion to continue in a second and vote without going into the substance of the matter.
Okay, entertain that motion?
Mayor, I move to a continuance for the item.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, let's move on to item 10A, please.
Approval of City Contract Number 2021-076 with PLAN ET. Am I saying that correctly, Tyler?
PLAN, PLANET.
Communities for Planning Services for the Prescott North and Granite Creek Area Plans.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tyler Goodman from the City Manager's Office. This is something that we brought to the council back in August to receive approval to go out for proposals for the Prescott North and the Granite Creek Area Plans. At this stage, I'll clarify, because it might be confusing to some members of the public. The next agenda item is about the Granite Creek Corridor Master Plan. These are complementary but not the same. So this is, this has to do with an area plan surrounding the corridor, the neighborhoods, the businesses. And then, of course, the north deals with all of North Prescott. So the goal is to really comprehensively look at these two areas, traffic, growth, infrastructure, economic development. The airport in the north is a big component. To look at these, to see what the city can plan for, as well as the stakeholders and the community. It's going to be a very interactive planning process. We're going to involve stakeholders. There's going to be open houses, a lot of community input. We received eight responses to our RFP. Staff narrowed it down to three. We interviewed those three firms and found Planet Communities to be the most qualified, and we have every confidence that they can do a great job for us. At this point, I'll introduce Leslie Dornfeld, who is the principal and project manager for this, and I'll turn it over to her.
Thanks, everybody. God forbid I speak without a backup. There we go. Hi, my name is Leslie Dornfeld. My firm's Planet. Our, our office, our main and our only office, is located in Phoenix, Arizona, and we're just thrilled to be up here and talking to you about both the North Creek Plan and the Granite Creek Area Plan, Corridor Plan. We think they're both great projects, and we're really looking forward to working with you. Before I talk about our team and our agenda, I just want to tell you why everyone on our team is just stoked, is the only word I can use, to do this. You know, you've got two separate plans, but when you really take a step back and you look at the big picture, both of these plans are an opportunity to really, I think, cement, because you're on your way there, your position in the region as really a center, an economic center, a center of innovation, and just a center for environmental awareness and community health as well. And so while we recognize these are two separate efforts, we recognize that together, these things are really going to help just catapult you on your way to where you want to be. And, and we do think it's a tremendous opportunity for the city, and we really do look forward to working with you on it. I just want to quickly take a little bit of your time, tell you about us and our team. Some of the things that we've identified from the beginning that we think need to be considered, a lot of these things were things we talked about in our interview. And then just take some time, since we are in front of you and your time is valuable, to just see what you're thinking and, you know, to kind of push us on the road and, and give us where, you know, what you think is important for us to look at and consider. We'll be back in front of you more than this, but it's a good way to start, we figured. Maybe not. So just to introduce our team, again, my firm is Planet. We're out of Phoenix. Working with us, leading the design portion is a firm called Callison RTKL. They're our only firm that's not an Arizona firm, and that's within basically an hour and 45 minutes of Prescott. Kurt knows. Kurt's the lead there. He knows Prescott. He loves it. Also on our team is Rick Merritt, who you probably know. He's done some economic studies for you and for your airport. In the north area, there's a landscape architect that's running the park portion of that effort. Included in the planning effort for the north area is to develop a preliminary concept plan for the, you call it the Granite Creek Park? North area park? Granite Dells Park, I'm sorry. Working with us on drainage, which is a huge topic actually in both areas, is Jeff Holtzmeister from J2 Engineering, and you may know Jeff. He's worked with you before as well. And then doing our traffic work for both area is Loca High, and that's Jamie Blakeman and Marina Stender. All of these folks are great. I've worked with all of them on prior projects. They, they're a rocking team, and they're going to make me look really good. And hopefully do great work. do great work for you. I just wanted to quickly let you see, I'm not going to go through all of this, that we are experienced. This isn't our first time at the rodeo. We recognize Prescott is actually a very unique community in Arizona, kind of a unique place. You've got your own vibe, but we have experience in all the kinds of skills that we're going to need to bring to both of these projects. A couple of things I'd like to highlight, Rick did the study for the airport. He's done economic and housing studies for this region in particular. In terms of land use and urban design, my team is currently leading the Chandler Airport Area Master Plan. We worked with both Rick, EDPCO, and Kurt, CRTKL, on the Phoenix Sky Harbor Land Reuse Strategy Phase Two. And that's a lot different than Prescott Airport, but it, a lot of the tools and techniques that we use there, we can now bring to you. We learned a lot on that project. It was a very unique project. We've also done a lot of redevelopment planning. We're just finishing up, for example, the Town of Florence redevelopment plan. We were the firm that led the designation for the downtown Phoenix redevelopment area boundaries, which hadn't been touched in twenty-some-odd years. So we understand downtowns and we know how important they are to communities. In terms of park design, you know, I worked with both Chad and the principal of DIG, Jay Hicks, prior to them forming DIG in Arizona. And Chad's brilliant and he's the guy that really was the brains behind the Phoenix Park with the cloud in it. And while you may or may not like that cloud, that park is amazing. And when you know what Phoenix didn't put in that park, all of the incredible pieces that they cut because they had to, you really realize what a phenomenal landscape architect Chad is. And I think he really is just totally focused on bringing you the best, best product that you're going to be able to get. In terms of public outreach, we've got some tools that we can bring to the table. We know these are unique times. We've put together a process that's partly digital, partly in person. We recognize that people need to see each other and talk, but we also recognize that we can't do it all the time and we can't do it in the way we used to do it. We have some online tools that allow people to more or less mimic a public meeting, but we also plan on holding public meetings. I think one of the highlights I want to mention is that going digital and more and more people going digital has benefited us in a way because we can do public engagement for less and we can, means we can do more of it. And so one of the things that we're bringing to both projects is what I'd call a coffee shop. Well, we're going to go online, I think at a regular interval at each project, I don't remember offhand how many, if it was every month or something like that, where people can just come and ask us questions. And we really want to make our team and the project and what we're doing as accessible as possible. So we're going to kind of have a online Zoom coffee house. And you want to get online, get online, talk to us. We're happy to answer whatever questions we can. Transportation, you know, Jamie is just like a little one-woman tornado and some of her ideas for both of the plans I'll be going through in a second. But she has a tremendous experience in not only working in undeveloped areas and understanding those transportation networks and how they need to come together, but also working in downtowns. And you can see some of her experience up there. And then finally, one of the last thing we bring to the table, and we think it's more and more important as we go forward, especially in these times, is health. And it's not only, you know, dealing with the pandemic, we are not going to come up with the vaccine that's going to cure the virus, you know, Pfizer has already done that, but keeping your community healthy, allowing people to have opportunities to be outdoors, to connect to the environment, that's really important, not only to mental health, but to physical health. And so we think that's something we can bring to both of these projects. So what I'm just going to do real quickly is go through what we see the opportunities are for Granite Creek and then I'll do it for the north area. And the reason I'm going to do it is just to get you guys, you thinking, so that you can let me know, hey, you missed this, hey, this is really important, hey, have you even thought about this? And we really appreciate any input you can give us. We're at the learning and listening phase now. And, and you live here, frankly, we don't, we can do a lot of research, but you're really the experts and we really do want to hear from you. So one of the things in terms of the downtown we think are important influences clearly is the New Hilton Garden Hotel. Recognizing the larger ecosystem of Granite Creek and that it's going to connect. So we, we see this redevelopment plan as, as redeveloping an area of the creek that potentially may have a larger implication for the city as we really continue to look at the reaches of the creek. We think that it really needs to add another dimension to the downtown. I might add that I read, I think it was the Downtown Strategic Plan, it didn't even mention Granite Creek. And it's such an important component of the downtown. It's, it's the surprise of the downtown. And it needs to be more than that now. It really needs to be a wonderful integral component. And finally, we think that it's really important in terms of a healthy community. It really gives people an opportunity to get out there and interact with nature, but walk and be physically healthy. So some of the existing conditions that we've identified are clearly the downtown is a floodplain. And one of the things that we recognize is that opening the creek up and leveraging the creek so that it promotes redevelopment in the downtown, but also promoting redevelopment that leverages the creek, there's an interface there. And as new development occurs, it needs to be respectful of the floodplain, but it also really needs to be respectful of the creek. There's some pretty big drop-offs on one side. On the other side, there's a little bit of a grade change. That's what Jeff's going to help us with, to make sure that as Kurt does some of our designs and design guidance, we're not doing stuff that's going to create problems for you later on as people put in permits to build. In terms of some economic influences, clearly, thinking of adding the downtown as an active recreation attraction, I forgot, I think it was a hundred and sixty thousand people a year visit that creek. It's a tremendous number. So if we now enhance it, as you're going to be doing in your next agenda item, you're going to get more folks. And if we begin to highlight it with businesses, even more folks, you know, how do we really begin to leverage all of that to make it turn into sales tax, frankly, and property redevelopment? We do think that you can next-gen the downtown with the creek. You know, everybody comes to Prescott to see the historic downtown and the historic courthouses, but we need to next-gen the downtown. And, and the creek can be part of that next-gen discussion. Maybe it's turning different kinds of development to the downtown that bring people in for different reasons. We do think there's some infill and intensification opportunities. You've got so many parking lots facing that creek, the cars have a great view. And we also think that you're going to add, you know, especially with the convention center, a lot of diversity of the downtown, folks coming from different areas, really for a convention, and we need to make sure that we can create some diversity so they use the downtown for other things than just going to that one restaurant next to the hotel. In terms of design and signing, the creek is a hidden asset and we recognize that you really should have a good sign plan and that's part of our proposal. But we also think there are some opportunities for design and the founding fathers is a great example. They're really beginning to turn, open up to the creek and make that sort of, you know, two front doors instead of a back door and a front door. These are just some of Jamie's, what I would call genius. She took a little bit of a look at the downtown and identified all of the opportunities that could happen in terms of transportation that are non-motorized, I'm not going to go through them, but she looked at ADA, foot access, and vehicular access. And then she decided that she would find you some more parking. And so in about twenty minutes, she found you, I think, another, I don't know, ninety-three new spaces downtown, just by looking at some of how your parking is configured. And we know that that's an important consideration downtown, so we think that that will be part of our planning effort is, you know, how can we really leverage this? Because if we redevelop parking lots, we're going to have to find more parking. When we look, I guess I could stop here and ask if you want to just give us other things to talk about, or should I keep going?
Yeah, we can pause here for a second and ask the council, you know, and I'll kick off. When we first looked at that, this whole planning, Leslie and, and Michael and I were talking about it, we were really focused on the north initially because that's where our growth is primarily happening. But we felt like while we have some good assets in the downtown, we're not fully leveraging, as you've already mentioned, particularly Granite Creek. So I just think, you know, with the downtown, it's, it is about Granite Creek. We've done a lot of work on that and we want to see that enhanced, but it's also really about how the creek interacts with downtown and all of Prescott. And you're right, it's such a great asset. And I, I think of it like the area where we looked at the Hilton Garden Inn previously, where the railroad trussel is there, and it was a real armpit, to be kind. And to see the hotel in there and to see that totally transformed with that area as well as founding fathers is very exciting and we see the potential of what can happen along Granite Creek, but I'd love to see that expanded out to much of downtown. And I think the, the non-motorized is great, that we need to encourage that along that corridor and make sure there's good access. And I know Tyler's already worked on some of this, but non-motorized downtown, I think, and using this off-street opportunity would be tremendous. And a lot of folks come here to mountain bike and I think if there was better access, particularly for pedestrian and bike on that thoroughfare, people would take advantage of it. Comments on the Granite Creek area, council, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I know Michael and I were brainstorming a few years ago regarding just being able to have a better plan for traffic and movement of vehicles, both from the airport and into the downtown core. So having, and I think our historical development has usually been kind of piecemeal with individual entrepreneurs coming up with ideas on individual projects, whether they're restaurants or something like founding fathers, but being able to have a more coordinated plan so that their vision can be integrated in a bigger plan that will really be much more attractive to business and tourism and some of our special events, I think is particularly important. And of course, I'll make my separate comments regarding the north area, but I think some of the costs that we were contemplating with just traffic studies, when we can work with a planning organization like yourself, really is able to bring a more robust, connected plan. And when you look at the cost per, I don't know, functional unit somehow, this is really a, is pretty dramatic savings. As long as we can get the planning done, if we can get the public and the stakeholders working together, then we can probably pull the trigger, so to speak, on this. While we have the opportunity to put the two developments together, at the same time, we have private developers trying to work on their own plans. So that's why it really needs to be done and done in a coordinated manner. And I think the timing is pretty, pretty appropriate for us to move forward with this at this time.
Mayor Proton?
Thank you. So welcome to Prescott. Thank you for, we're glad that you've applied to do this for us. Two things I'd just like to recognize, that is our garage. It's very important that people realize where that garage is, you know, signage, anything we might do along the Granite Creek Corridor. And also the Whiskey Row Alley, which is something that we've been talking about and working on now for about a year and a half. If we can incorporate those things together along with the Granite Creek Corridor, you know, would be very helpful.
Any other comments from the council at this point? If not, we'll ask Leslie to move to the north.
All right. So northward. There's a lot going on up north. I mean, you might drive through it and say, hey, you know, just a bunch of grassland, but hardly. And, you know, I think just right, right before us, the airport presentation sort of begins to put a focus on just one, one component of all of the great things that are going on up in the north, north area. And we really think this area is an opportunity to sort of reframe you. And, and we think it needs to happen not only through land use and economic activity, but also through design and potentially through transportation networks. And I don't think we could do much better in terms of how you respect the environment, but recognizing that environment in a very progressive way. We know that the existing general plan and then your approved master plan communities are not a hundred percent in sync, they're somewhat in sync, but they're not like exactly overlaying. But we think that all of this new development really offers us an opportunity to rethink some of that general plan land use and also some of the areas that may have been identified as commercial. And also maybe talk with those landowners at places they had looked at and saying, you know, hey, if we take a bigger picture, look here, maybe there are some opportunities to just adjust everything to fine-tune it. And so we think that's an opportunity in the north area. We also know the airport is growing, we just heard about that, and it really should be a key element of anything we do up there. That airport's really important. And, you know, I would say even looking, you know, right now we're working in Chandler and their airport is not going to grow. I shouldn't say that. At this point in time, they don't think their airport will grow, although they're talking about it. Even as a small airport, there's so much potential for economic development and innovation around that hub. So I think that the fact that you are a regional airport, growing or not, kind of looking forward to growth or not, you can't overlook the potential of your airport in the near term and also in the very long term. We also think the potential of partnerships in, in your particular situation is just super cool. You know, I mean, Phoenix might have genomics, but you've got Embry-Riddle. And, and we think that that's very much a future, the whole idea of avionics, not avionics, but avionics, which is that whole industry around drones and research and all of the cool stuff that comes with air innovation. We're really there. We do know that access is tough up there. You've got a tremendous wash, so east-west access is very difficult. You've got a state road dealing with the state is not a cakewalk. You've got state land, you've got topography. So it's important and we need to really think about that in terms of how you do design and identify areas for development. And that we think that the opportunity to connect the creek from the north down to the south is really vital. And, you know, this area is cut off by, it was a mix of eighty-nine, eighty-nine A, but I think it's eighty-nine A. Wrong, right, eighty-nine A? So you don't want that cut off. And that creek is a really vital connector. And it can not only be a visual connector, it can be a physical connector for a lot of different opportunities and ways. So those are some of the planning influences we identified. Very specifically, the floodplain. If we're going to cross the creek, it's going to be expensive. It's real simple. And so we need to think about that. However, Jamie's already done a lot of thinking about that. We know that in terms of economics, we've talked a lot about that, some of your assets, advanced technologies, and we really do think that this is an opportunity to be a center of advanced manufacturing operations and R and D. It's, it's a tremendous area and you've got the land and the topography and the location and the access for all of those things. In terms of land use, you know, we really think there's opportunities to create things like innovation quarters. We think that some of the housing in AED South and Deep Wells might be opportunities for the kinds of employees you want to bring up there. In addition to other newer types of housing, we think that there might be some opportunities to reposition some of those planned land uses. We know that we need to engage the state land department very early. And so that would be one of the things on our, top of our to-do list. And also to consider what's going on around you, you know? Chino Valley's growing, frankly, and, you know, this sounds terrible to say to Chino Valley, but why give them all the sales tax in the north? And then other things is, you know, just how's that housing interface work? Also Williamson Valley's growing and clearly Prescott Valley is growing. So we just need to think of those places and their impacts on your community. And we also think that there are decisions that have been made that are going to kind of direct, or they've either opened doors or put us in a different direction, and we need to really consider this as we go forward. Particularly, you've got a lot of solar north of the airport, you've just, or you're purchasing some great open space at the end of the airport. I know you're getting some. Those are really great things to think about as we move forward in our planning, tremendous opportunities. In terms of design and identity, this is from CRTKL Kurt, that is the, I think, Memphis Aero, Aero, Memphis Air Park Master Plan or the AeroTropolis Master Plan. But the area really needs an overall vision. It really needs something to pull it together. And we think that one of the things that we can do in terms of design and development is identify catalytic sites that'll really give you an idea of what the opportunities are up there. And will give the community an idea. You've got people living up there, it's not like a completely vacant area, they're going to have a voice. Give them a vision of what really could be and a bigger picture of what they could be a part of. So we do think it's a tremendous opportunity for design and development to set a very unique image. That may be a different image than you have here. It might be even a kind of second part of Prescott. And then again, as I talked about, the catalytic sites and maybe firming up a little bit more your general plan design. your general plan design guideline, guidance. And these are some of the catalytic site designs. The bottom one, I think, came from Phoenix, our Phoenix project, but just to give people a real vision of what they could have. In terms of circulation, I told you Jamie's already done a lot of work. She's looked at trips in that area and what the increase on traffic is going to be. And I think the number that sticks in my head is a 300% increase. So we really do need to strategically plan roadway infrastructure. She threw out, and these might be bad ideas or good ideas, it's just to let you know we're thinking. A loop road might be a way to help connect traffic around that area, that we should start planning now for a multimodal network, and that's going to connect very much into our land use and design, making sure that Granite Creek is a pedestrian amenity that runs through the entire north area, as well as an open space amenity. And maybe, again, this kind of loop road that starts with Granite Dells Parkway. And then the park. And I'm going to fall down because Chad is so thoughtful about this. So I'm going to try and do the best job I can. But he came up and really looked at the park. And what he really thinks is important is to develop a character of place and really maximizes the resource that you have. I mean, it's such a unique site. It's up against creek, and it's got the Dells. So it's a very special place in Prescott. And he really wants to make sure that access to those unique areas is prioritized. He thinks it's really important in the early stages to begin to organize your spaces so that you get the opportunity to provide the places for all the things you want to do. And one of the things we want to do as part of our park planning effort, in fact, as all three plans, but the park as well, is put out a citywide survey to get people to tell us what their vision is for this park. And we've done that with a couple of other parks plans, and we get pretty good response. So we suspect we'll get a fairly good response for this one as well. And the other thing that Chad really recognizes the importance of the connections for this park to really connect to other parks that are around there. I think the Peavine Trail is one of the more important connections. And make sure we don't lose that and lose that access and connectivity as we think about the park. Someone mentioned community engagement. So I just want to, this is sort of a summary for both plans, but typically what we'll do is, as we kick off our project, we'll do a walking tour. This would be both for the Granite Creek area and the north area. And what makes our walking tour a little different probably than some others, is what we try to do is meet people on site. And this is probably going to be much more valuable for the Granite Creek component. But it's so different when you're standing on site and someone points at something and says, you know, and it just creates a whole different dialogue. And so we're hoping to be able to do that. We think it shouldn't be a problem. We think we can handle it in a socially-distanced way. We do have steering committee meetings for both projects, and then also community meetings for both projects, where folks can come up. One of them is what I would call a design meeting, where they really give us ideas on opportunities and alternatives and what they think is going to work. And ultimately, that gets refined into a single alternative that the community takes a look at. As I'd mentioned, online survey for all projects, including the park, is sort of a separate little component. And we'll also be having project webpages for both projects. So folks can go there for updates on what's going on, future meetings, any product that gets produced as part of the process will be on the webpage. We can put links to all the studies that you've done on these areas. Both of them have been very well studied. If people want more information, so just sort of as a resource opportunity. I talked about our online community update meetings, our little coffee houses. And then also, we'll be in front of you for study sessions and presentations, because it's important that you give us guidance. We don't want to just run all the way down the road and get there and turn around and say, hey, and have you look at us and say, maybe not. So we want to make sure that we're keeping abreast of you all the way. Just our last kind of piece of this is our planning approaches. Some of the real key decisions, the big things we need to do early, we need to make sure we have a vision for both of these areas and the park. And we really want this plan to be focused on, both plans actually, to be focused on opportunities. You know, you can look at the negative, I'm a glass-half-full kind of girl, and we think both of these are, you know, kind of full glasses already, but really focus on the opportunities and how do we get us to where we want to go. And if getting us means moving some obstacles, that's fine. But, you know, stay focused on the opportunities and not focused on anything that has held us back. So with that, I'd love to hear, oh, and I just want to say one thing. You may or may not know this, but, so when I was up in the north area, I found the cemetery, which is, I'm kind of a cemetery person. And, not that I want to die, I just think they're interesting. And you've got a couple of gravestones in Chinese up there. And so I have a girlfriend who's very active and back east in Chinese community. She's an old friend of mine. And I kind of emailed her the picture, and I said, hey, translate. And so she said her Chinese wasn't that good, so she shipped it off to another friend. But this is actually the grave of, the phonetic translation would have been Chan Yum Chung, if you say it in Cantonese. And he died in 1949. He was born on November 22nd, sometime in the early 1900s. So he was a young guy. And she also sent me an article. And on Goodwin Street, there were a lot of Chinese businesses. And it was sort of interesting to read about it. So it's just part of your history. It's a really unique thing, and I just thought it'd be cool to share it with you. So with that, I'd love to hear what you're thinking about with the north area.
Well, Leslie, thank you. That's a great presentation. You've hit the ground running already, and we won't be able to exhaust all of our thoughts here today, but you can definitely get our least preliminary thoughts. So appreciate that. Councilman Blair?
Yeah, I don't want to drag this out too much. I really thought this would be great to have at a study session so we could talk more about it, but maybe we can bring that back and do that. This is just about approving a contract, which I believe needs to happen. One thing I would set out there early on to you, I'm glad you brought it up, are cemeteries. We do not have any space in a cemetery in Prescott, Arizona. They're built out, for the most part. We need to look at preserving the end of the runways, both east and west, for possible design of a bark park. And people may laugh at that, but in the aging community that people have their pets, they want to also put them someplace that they can be remembered by as well. So when you start doing this long-range plan out there, I think we need to plan some areas for future memorial sites, even crematory sites, as well as maybe a celebration center that is multimodal zoning, so that we have a very specific area. When you have Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, and everybody moving north, our dead need to move north, too. So this is a prime example of when we can make that happen.
Mr. Lamar, Councilman Blair brings a good point in terms of a study session. What are you thinking?
Yeah, I think that Leslie points on having multiple study sessions. She just kind of wanted to give you a taste of what's coming, to make sure that she's not going down a track that you're not comfortable with.
Fair.
I've articulated what I believe is needed, and I've communicated that to Leslie. So she's kind of given you a macro view of what we're thinking to make sure that we're not totally off the path. And I don't think we are. I'm seeing a lot of nodding, but there'll be a tremendous amount of opportunity for you guys to get into the weeds on this, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, no, that's fair. And I want the council and the public to realize, you know, we're throwing some ideas out right now, but we're going to have plenty of opportunities in the future for the council, but more importantly, for the public to react to this plan. Councilman Choal?
Thanks, Mayor. Very impressed with your grasp of Prescott so far in your limited time. I think, you know, the two plans are connected, but I think they're going to be different feelings and different vibes. And so I'm excited that you kind of have a grasp on that, because I think that's important. And, you know, Prescott is a unique community, and so I think we're going to have unique plans and a unique future. I'm wondering how you identify stakeholders and kind of how you create your steering committees and what that looks like.
That's a great question. Typically, we're going to look to you, the city, either Tyler, manager, or the council, to identify the steering committee. We would certainly, I help work with you guys to identify interests, but the individuals would certainly come from you. Stakeholders is a really good question, especially now. So I think at this point, what we would probably do is, one, I know you already have a lot of constituency for Granite Creek and a lot of groups. So to just put the word out through those groups, put a link to the website with a, you know, give us your name and email address. We'll keep you abreast of what's going on. We keep it in a Google Doc, a Google Doc to just let folks kind of, we got a big spreadsheet. For the north area, reaching out to the landowners, certainly. And then for the, what I saw up there, it looks like there are a lot of HOAs that may be managing some of the development up there. So probably reaching out to the HOAs to start, and asking them to just advertise the project is starting in their, either on their websites or in their newsletters, and beginning to build mailing lists.
Yeah. And then I think another thing to maybe add to the north plan is, there's this, there's a school district boundary that basically goes through Deepwell Ranch. So north of Deepwell is Chino Valley Unified School District, and south is Prescott Unified School District. So I think that's important to kind of include in this whole process, and just something to keep in mind as we plan that particular part.
Thank you.
Kelsol Man Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for coming up. Glad you guys are doing what you're doing. You keep mentioning the park, and I have an idea of what that might be, but what is included in the park?
Do you want me to speak to that, Leslie? We were talking about the Granite Dells Park and Preserve, and that there will be an area that is more of your classic park, where you may have some amenities, whether it's gazebo's or swing sets, or I'm just spitballing at this point. And it obviously would be part of the 743 acres. It would be an area that's very accessible and flat and in the grasslands, and it's right along Granite Creek. So what she was saying is that I thought what would be valuable as part of her exercise would be the master planning of that park area. Because in my mind, that is one of the components of North Prescott that's very important, and it'd be showcased. So I think it would be really a good opportunity that the stakeholders are similar, and some of them are the same, that we engage Leslie in the master planning of that, if you felt like that was a worthwhile exercise. I do personally, so.
Thank you. Let's see. Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you. Hi, welcome. You had a lot of great ideas.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to say Granite Creek corridor is very unique, as you said. And I would just like to say, I'd like to see it keep its charm and maintain as many trees as possible, and keep the use of hardscape to a minimum. I've seen some projects that just get out of hand and get over-engineered, and everything gets paved over in concrete, rock, dirt, and all the trees are cut down for some reason. And then, moving on to the north, I think this is a wonderful idea to kind of get things kind of coordinated, to have a vision. If we're going to attract people to the community, I think this is wonderful to say, hey, here's our plan, and then they can have some expectations. And because we're asking people to come here and invest a lot of money, and it would be helpful if they knew that we had a plan. So, thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think the two planning areas are quite distinctively different in their future benefit to the community at large. The area around the airport is such a powerful economic driver, and as we have such rapid development right now going on with multiple developers who have their own plans and timetables, being able to bring those stakeholders together to try to have a agreed-upon larger vision, that it doesn't necessarily have to make the most profit in the shortest amount of time, if they understand how the development around the airport, if it's properly planned, and we can have such a kind of a multi-use, because we not only have commercial air traffic, but we have general aviation traffic. We've got a very large and expanding flight training program. And then we've got new residential areas starting to be built and occupied with people who don't really have an understanding of where they are and what the impact of the airport will be on their quality of life. So you've got a lot of different stakeholders that have to be brought together to have a, at least somewhat of agreed-upon vision for the future. And then how those two developmental areas, both the downtown and the north, will connect. So traffic, kind of corridors, and whether we can have that large area in the north be more self-sustaining, so that we're not having a lot of traffic moving back and forth from the downtown core. And the development around Granite Creek really needs to be effectively planned for. And that's one of the things, I mean, I listened to your presentation, and I know the team members you have have a better understanding of some of the unique Arizona revised statutes and land development codes and changes in zoning that can or can't be done. So that's what I was really impressed with your team. But we have such a big demand going on right now, that taking too long to plan may not be effective, because we have to be able to get these stakeholders engaged so that they can at least somewhat agree on where the best development is and what timeframe. So I guess that's what we're paying the professionals to do. And good luck with that, quite frankly.
Thank you.
So, yeah, there's a real balance around the airport area and the airport area-specific planning. Well, it's a big, it's a big part of the map. And we're already starting to see new residents there, not really understanding where they're living. So I think it's important to have that plan developed, get the public engaged, and then the stakeholders particularly, to be able to have somewhat of an agreement that we can get that, get the planning put together and start to implement it. Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
Thank you. So Leslie, I noticed that you had Whispering Rock on your map. You had noted that. Right adjacent to Whispering Rock is Embry-Riddle, or Nautica Unit. It's a huge part of our northern development that needs to be included. Also, right there is also the Pioneer Park. There's quite a large sports complex that's very active in our city, and it's got pickleball with it. It's got softball, baseball, a skate park, hockey. So there's a lot of, that our families are involved there, so I think that's a key piece. And the parks and trails, we have the Brownlow Trail there, a lot of equestrian and bike riding. And the business park, I go out there every now and then, and I want it to be more welcoming. It's kind of helter-skelter. It's, we need to clean it up, make it so that if somebody is looking to put a business somewhere, we want them to want to have their business there at our business park. And there's a lot that needs to happen off of Wilkinson Drive, and just to make that more welcoming, and that people would be proud of putting their business there. So I think that has such potential for us. And so I would hope that you would focus quite a bit on the business part. Thank you, Leslie.
Good comments. Councilman Good already mentioned the airport, and I just, I want to make sure that, and I know several of us, or probably all of us, we really value our airport and want to protect the use of the airport. And so we don't want to have undue encroachment or something that down the road would create a situation where, you know, we're seeing the airport and the uses there inhibited. Traffic is very important. Again, it's already been mentioned, but, you know, we're in a spot where we need to make sure we're preparing for the kind of traffic we're going to see, not just in the north, but all through Prescott. Mayor Protim works on a group called Cempo. Central YAFPI Metropolitan Planning Organization, that'd be someplace you'd want to stop in and make sure you'd connect with those folks, in regard to the work that they've already done. Love the walkable idea, particularly in the north. We need to create those kinds of communities that are walkable, where all services, most services are very close at hand, so that you have fewer cars on the road. I love the catalytic sites that you mentioned. We have California businesses coming here, looking to relocate. It's already happened. There will be more. We need to make sure that houses don't get in the way of those catalytic sites. catalytic sites. Housing is a low hanging fruit for developers. They love to just throw up rooftops and that's great as long as they're in the right spot and they're not inhibiting those catalytic sites. Granite Creek's interesting. You know, you mentioned it here again, you know, and it's a, it's a real asset, not just in the downtown, but all the way to the north. And so preserving Granite Creek, making sure we have trails that, that work with Granite Creek and the park, et cetera, you've already mentioned. The last thing I'll say, probably inadvertent omission, but Yafai College has a presence at the airport with their C-Tech and, and of course, they have a great presence here in our community and so want to make sure that they're included in your planning. Without any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Any other comments up here? We'll get another shot at this.
You're going to get multiple shots. I don't feel like this has to be an exhaustive list today. Literally, this was just her presenting her firm and the project and give you a taste of what we're trying to do.
Well, I think what you're hearing here is just the excitement from the council to, to see this move forward and get done, which is great. It's good news for Prescott. We have a lot of good news today. And Michael, thank you for your work on this. Tyler as well. And Leslie, thanks for being here today. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to approve city contract number 2020-076.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good. Thanks again, Leslie. Appreciate it. Look forward, yeah, look forward to working with you. All right, let's move on to item 10B, please.
Adoption of resolution number 2020-1762, authorizing city staff to apply for grant funding for the Granite Creek Corridor.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Once again, Tyler Goodman from the City Manager's Office. Glad to be here for this item. It has been a project in the making for a couple of years now. As you know, and as we've heard, we're seeking council approval to apply to the Arizona State Land and Water Conservation Fund for a million dollars. This is to implement at least half of the master plan that we've completed. This would include a $500,000 city match, 50%. In-kind services would be included in that. We don't have a dollar breakdown yet of what that would look like, but with over the hill gang, with city staff, with a partner such as APS who has an interest in the trees that are almost touching their lines, we see in-kind services being a part of this. However, we're asking for the full match to show the fund that we can pay for our portion of this grant so they can approve it. There is also a grant administration charge of 10%, so that's $50,000 in this case. The total commitment from the city would be $550,000. We're seeking to begin work in April of 2021 and will, we hopefully, we plan on being done by April of 2022. At this point, I'll pause for questions. I have one more thing related to this I want to ask of the council, but are there any questions about this grant or the amounts?
So Tyler, you mentioned, what's the grant cycle? You're trying to get started on the work April of 2021.
The grant cycle, so the fund, their board, I guess I would call it meets every couple of months to approve grants that are coming in. We're, we are doing the application as we speak, working on it every day. It's quite a lengthy one, but we plan to have it approved in January. I think that's the next time that the board will meet that we can get our packet into. And with approval, we'll get things lined up. We are simultaneously also, right now, putting out an RSOQ, a Statement of Qualifications for Engineering and Design Services for the entire thing. And the grant would pay for at least half of that based on what's covered in their eligibility.
Very good. And this phase one, you think will take April 2021 through April 22?
So that's, that's where I should clarify. We believe that the entire project could take a one year.
Okay.
This grant, the eligibility only covers about half of the items in our master plan. The other half have to do with stormwater coming into it. Basically, anything that is in the creek itself, improving the flow, improving the grade control, improving its interactions with the trail, improving, if you've been on the trail recently, you've seen water is undercutting a lot of the trail under the bridges. So those types of things aren't covered by the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Our plan was to simultaneously apply for other grant funding to cover those portions. Recently, I found out that two of those funding sources which would cover most, if not all of those costs, are no longer doing grants for this moment due to financial implications from COVID. So we, so the options are, we either wait on that half of the project while finishing this half of the project. But I also wanted to address the council with the estimated cost for that. The, the cost for the other half of the master plan is about $520,000. It would be a 50% grant ideally if these were actually funding right now. So our share would be 260,000. What we wanted to bring to you today is, is the idea and a discussion, if you're interested in pursuing the completion of the entire project, it would be adding essentially at the end of the day, $260,000 to the city's burden of the overall project. If not, there are some complications such as we finish half of this project, but then we get grant funding for the other half. We have to bring equipment back in, which might tear up the trail in order to fix the things we need to in the creek. There's also, the idea of these other improvements is to improve the water flow so that it doesn't knock the trail out as badly as it does every year during monsoons especially. So there's some complications if we wait. So I wanted to bring it to, to your attention so we could address it and talk about it a little more.
Michael, your thoughts on that topic and funding?
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's a financial decision. I mean, do we feel like the benefits of doing this in a single phase, the creek itself and the trail system is worth the $260,000 out of pocket? It's a lot of money. But I know that there's a lot of interest that has been expressed individually in the council. Let's get this done. Let's do this. We are benefiting from, did you have something you wanted to share, John?
No.
Oh, okay. We are benefiting from sales tax revenues that are outpacing what we budgeted. Is it, you know, in rough numbers, $260,000 is probably about, you know, a single month's more of revenue than we budgeted. Is that worth doing in a single phase? I don't want to speak for you guys. I, I think that there is value to not tearing something up that you've just finished.
Sure.
And the other part is if you wait a year, there's no guarantee that you're going to get another pocket of money or that, in other words, if the agencies that we were looking at to get this money from aren't in a good financial situation, a year from now, you could have waited a year and
Sure.
still not be able to tap 260K.
When did we start this whole process? I feel like we've been at this a while.
August of 2018.
August of 2018. Cause I know, I know, I want to hear what y'all are thinking on the dais here, but I'm hearing people like, you know, you, you did all this planning, but we don't see anything as a result, you know? And, and I think there is some pent up, you know, excitement or hope that, that this will get done. And you're right. If, you know, my opinion is if we're going to do this, let's go in and get it all done and, and move on.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? The way this is agendized, it can, yeah.
I see you wrangling.
Kind of teed it up. We have a meeting next week. My suggestion is, is make a decision on the grant now. It's teed up. If you can get it on next week's agenda and then the council can approve the, you know, if you want to approve the expenditure out of the, out of the general fund for that 260 and authorize staff to apply for whatever grants. I think you could have a separate agenda item for that
Fair.
in a week.
Yeah, because this is just in regard to applying for grant funding.
And, and if there seems to be general agreement to have that discussion next week, we can do that.
Yeah, I would imagine that's going to be the case.
And I just want to clarify, Mayor, that it would be an additional 520,000. 50% of that would have been covered by a grant ideally. So our added burden, end of the day, is 260. But if, if I come back, it would be with the amount of about 520,000.
Okay. Well, we'll move forward with this discussion, keeping in mind that next week we'll look at having that on the agenda. So, you know.
And again, it's real money. So if the desire is to wait, you wait.
Sure. Fair enough. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. I look at this as a legacy project, something that's going to be enjoyed for future generations, 20, 30, 50 years from now. And I think the expenditure that we are going to be spending, you know, pencils out over all those years. And I would like to ask about the master plan. Did we ever get it extended all the way down to the Lazy G or not?
It, it is not. It stops at Aubrey Street and that was within, that was within the planning of it. It does not extend down. What street is that?
LaRue.
LaRue.
Cause Lazy G would be a great anchor for the south part of this master plan. So I was just wondering if people would be on board to considering that.
I think that makes some sense.
We would love it. And I know if, and Joe, if you want to speak to it, I know we don't quite have connection yet.
Right. We've, we've been working on that, Councilwoman Rusin, for quite a while. We have a couple of property owners that are reluctant to allow an easement through their properties. We do have road access through there, so there is circuit, kind of like the circle trail, right? We connected it a few years ago, but it's not complete. We'll, we'll continue to work on better access. So to your point, we will have what we can call an alternative access down to Lazy G. Won't be what we, what we want at the end of the day and that's done easily enough.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you. Tyler, thank you for this. It's exciting to get this moving again and I certainly want to do it the right way. You know, our downtown is so special. Everybody knows it when they come to Prescott. But when you also realize the Granite Creek Corridors, they are in addition to a beautiful plaza, beautiful downtown, it just has something for everybody. So I agree with Councilwoman Rusin, this is a legacy project. I think we should get this done. So I look forward to approving that possibly next week. Yeah.
Councilman Blair.
Yeah, I'll make it pretty clear, Mayor. I, I feel your pain when you talk about what we've basically promised people down there. So just so everybody knows, the cleanup on the APS site is done. The transfer to Prescott College is going to be done. They're going to be utilizing that space. It's on that corridor. We have a convention center that's going in on that corridor. We have Granite Creek Park that's being redone. We have Founding Fathers that's relying on the connectivity from both one end to the other. So we need to put the pedal to the metal and get this thing done.
Very good. Sounds like we will make sure it's on the agenda next week. Anything else from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution number 2020-1762.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Very good. Thank you, Tyler. Nice title, by the way. All right, let's move on to item 10C, please.
Approval of city contract number 2021-072 for the purchase of one fire engine truck from Rosenbauer South Dakota LLC using source ball contract number 022818-RSB.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of Council. Dennis Lightfire, Chief, City of Prescott. The item before you this afternoon is a replacement item for one of our aged fire trucks. The truck is currently about 14 years in frontline service, upwards of 200,000 miles. The purchase itself, like most of our apparatus needs is over a two-year period. So this is not quite half of what the fire truck involves. The maintenance cost in the last year, kind of a rolling calendar year, was about $62,000 for this vehicle alone. So when this came before the FAB or the Fleet Asset Review Board, it was one of the few capital purchases that was agreed upon through that process and hopefully that will gain your approval. With that, I have fleet folks here that can answer any of the technical questions. Other than that, I'll turn it back to yourselves.
Thank you, Chief. Questions, comments from the council? I did a little research on where these are made.
South Dakota.
Lyons, South Dakota, which is on, you know, East River versus West River. I'm familiar having gone to many football games there in South Dakota. Any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approved, approved city contract number 2021-072.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for the mask, by the way.
Thank you.
There you go. Yeah, I bet you. All right, our last item on this agenda, item 10D, please.
Public hearing regarding a substantial amendment to the 2019 CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Good after, good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. This is Michelle Chavez from the Community Development Department, City of Prescott. Just have a couple of quick slides here for you today. So this is, anytime that we want to amend our CDBG Annual Action Plan, we have to do an amendment. And so we had some funds left over from 2019 Annual Action Plan that were unused from another project. And so in order to set up a new activity at HUD, we have to get approval from the Community Advisory Board that oversees our CDBG program. And we also have to get approval from the city council. So this is a recommendation to approve a substantial amendment to the 2019 Annual Action Plan. The dollars are being proposed to help out at the Prescott Adult Center. They had a emergency water event and they had significant damage to their small kitchen and they had significant mold damage. So they came to us a couple of months ago and had asked for the opportunity to apply for CDBG dollars that we had potentially left over from 2019. So we had them fill out an application. They went through the regular process, even though it wasn't during our January timeframe. And then they presented to the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Citizen Advisory Committee approved that in, in August. So this substantial amendment, what would happen is we're asking for the approval to move $38,000 from 2019, which was unspent, to the Prescott Adult Center for emergency kitchen repairs. This, your action today would authorize us to update our annual action plan at HUD and create a new activity for the adult center so that we could fund them. So that's basically the summary. I would take questions from you all.
Thank you, Michelle. Questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. I had an opportunity to tour the site and this particular project. It's very, very much needed. The community center provides so many great programs for our entire community, especially many of our seniors. And this black mold damage was really unknown when the new executive director took over and it wasn't something that really could be prevented. It was just discovered. And in order for that kitchen to continue to operate and provide the meals and, and the other things that the community center needs, it's, it's, it's very essential. So I would, I would support this.
Councilman Good, isn't the kitchen there kind of more residential in nature too as well? I mean, they don't have all of the commercial amenities that.
They just primarily warm things up for quinceañeras and, and other programs where some organization is utilizing their facilities and wants to provide their own catered food or something like that. So it's, has nothing to do with the Meals on Wheels section of the community center. So when you get that black mold in there, it's got to get out.
Yep. Good. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. As you know, the adult center is very important to our community. They've got a great staff out there that's working very hard. They've been doing a lot of remodeling during this time of COVID when they have been shut down. And this is one of the projects. This would be the perfect time to do it now so that when they do get up and running, they can start serving the community. There's a shortage of venues in the community and they're very important to, for quinceañeras, receptions, weddings, funerals. It's a great space. Thank you.
All right. Any public comments?
All right, any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close public hearing.
I'll second that. We have a motion, motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve substantial amendment, approve substantial amendment to the fiscal year 19 CDBG Annual Action Plan.
Second. I have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, our quote comes from Ronald Reagan today. "When you can't make them see the light, make them feel the heat. This meeting is adjourned."
That's good.